At seven o'clock, I call the city council meeting to order. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Let the roll reflect that we are here with Tina Fults being absent tonight. So we have established a quorum. Council, we will read a proclamation tonight for the declaring the Sons of Norway as May 17th as their day. So, Mr. Flower, would you like to meet me at the podium? Councilmember Brax, would you like to start?
Sure. Whereas, May 17th, 2019, called Sittende Mai in Norwegian, marks the 250th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution of Norway and its independence from Denmark. And...
Whereas Sittende Mai is celebrated worldwide with parades and traditional foods. And...
Whereas many residents of Hastings are Scandinavian, are of Scandinavian descent. And...
Whereas local lodges, like the Sons of Norway, play a central part in organizing the festivities and areas. And...
Whereas the Hemcast Lodge has eighty-three members from Hastings, Cottage Grove, and surrounding areas. And whereas the Hemcast Lodge works to preserve Scandinavian traditions and cultures. And...
Whereas we recognize the signing of Norway's constitution. And now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mary Fespender, Mayor of the City of Hastings, do hereby proclaim May 17th, 2019, as Sons of Norway Day in the City of Hastings, Minnesota.
Thank you, Mayor Mary. The Sons of Norway Lodge in Hastings was established in 1985. And, you know, some of our stalwart members of the Hastings community were the charter members. Dwayne Davic was one of them, and people like Janet Martin, and I'm sure you know many others. But, you know, the people from Norway and Scandinavia and other cultures, the Irish, the Germans, they came to Hastings, they made Hastings their home, and they made it the kind of place that grew into the great city of Hastings that it is today. So, we're proud to have our lodge here in Hastings, and we're proud of being able to continue the Scandinavian culture and heritage. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the April 15th meeting? Seeing none, could I have a motion? Oh, sorry. Comments from the audience. Is there anyone here that would like to address the council upon anything other than the consent agenda or anything that's on the agenda?
Public comment or something?
Yes. Please state your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, Council, my name's Matt Begich, 7:18 West 14. And a couple Wednesdays ago, I went out to the compost tennis has out there by the bus depot, you know? Got out there about twenty after three, was about number fifteen line, but eventually I got up to the, they got two garbage cans. And the guy in front of me, he's got, like, fifteen tubs and three or four big plastic garbage cans. And I knew who I was, and I yelled out, "Hey, you're holding up the parade, let's go." So I pulled in, I had four plastic bags. And the guy says, "You can't bring plastic bags no more." And I says, "Well, I dump them and reuse them." And he says, "Nope, you can't do that." I says, "What do you mean?" He says, "No more plastic bags. You gotta be in a container, or those browned compost ones, you know?" So I thought, "God, that can't be right." So I called up tennis, talked to the lady, she goes, "Yep, you can't bring plastic bags no more, dump them and reuse them." I says, "Well, if they can, you gotta put it in containers." And they dumped the containers, and they can reuse the containers, why can't you use plastic bags, dump them and reuse them? Because I bought those constructions ones, three mil, forty-two gallon. I think this'll be the fourth year I've used them. And I says, "Well, if I buy them brown ones, they're a buck a piece." I go, "Can I dump them and reuse them? Because I use, like, fifty to fifty-five a year in the fall." She goes, "Nope, you can't reuse the brown ones." I says, "That don't make sense." So I thought, I come and see if you guys can maybe, if you got some say to tennis, say, "Hey, why can't they dump the plastic bags and reuse them? Because if you gotta buy containers, I only got two trees. What if you got five or six trees? And you gotta have a hundred and fifty bags, a hundred and fifty bucks? And then you gotta fill them up again and pay again." And it says right in the thing here, it says, the lady told me, it says, it's right in the rules. So I looked it up, it says, "Grass, leaf, and brush drop-off is free. Material must be in either compostable paper bag, or the container must be emptied and removed from the site. No loose materials or plastic bags accepted." Well, I'm not leaving the plastic bag there, I'm reusing it. So, I don't, you know, it doesn't make sense to me. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming tonight. When people come, are they dumping them into a pile? Or into a truck?
Into the truck. But, you know, they got, like, the guy had, like, fifteen of them and three big, you know, garbage cans, plastic ones, and it took forever. Dump, stack, dump, stack.
So you're emptying a bag...
And then reusing it.
Whereas he's emptying a container.
A tub, a plastic tub. They say you can't bring plastic bags and dump them and reuse them. I know there's a problem with plastic in the world, but, you know, if you gotta buy ten, you know, them tubs ain't that big. You gotta buy a lot of them. Where are you gonna store them? Build another garage for them all, you know?
Sure.
All right, I don't know if you guys have any say in that, if you get them to change it or something.
You know, Matt, I'll take your name and number, and we'll have staff look into it.
Sure.
And then I can get back to you.
All right, sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Council, I will accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Bolsonik, councilmember Leifelt, all those in favor? Oh, excuse me, yes.
Sorry, before, I wanted a chance to poll number ten.
Oh, okay.
For that, if that's okay with the motion person?
Yes, yes.
Okay. We'll move that, excuse me, under administration. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda with number ten being placed under administration? Joe, first, and seconded was Leifelt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Council, let's see. Community development, tonight we have an approval of land credit and property. John, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City council members, tonight we've got an action for sale of property within the Hastings Industrial Park under our land credit program. So I'll go through some of the details of that, as well as the conceptual plan that we have for the property. The property we're looking at is a two-and-a-half acre piece which is located along Spiral Boulevard, which is here, just east of Enterprise Avenue before you get into the Glendale Heights Estates area. The entity that's looking to purchase the property, Creek Rentals, is looking to put up four buildings for it, for mini-storage. And so, they are looking to grant approval for this under our land credit program, which allows for a discount on the purchase price of the land, provided that certain job and/or property value increases occur on the property. And so, on the two-and-a-half acre property, they would be looking at putting on three mini-storage buildings, and then one other storage building as well, which would total approximately forty-some thousand square feet with a valuation of $1.1 million. And so, when we take a look at our land credit calculation on this one, there would be, there would be a discount on the price of the land, and with cash owed at sale of about $63,000 altogether on this. So we did have the Hastings Economic Development and Redevelopment Authority look at this at the last meeting on the 23rd, looking at a couple of different things. One, the land credit, where they're in agreement with staff's assumptions as far as the valuation, and whether a land credit would be warranted in this standpoint, and they agreed with that. Took a look at the concept plan as well. The concept plan in here is pretty basic at this standpoint. You've, what I did here, go back. There we go. It's pretty basic with the buildings located perpendicular to Spiral Boulevard, being about 12,000 square feet apiece in this. These three blue ones would be general storage buildings, and the yellow one would be a business storage building. So that's what would be proposed upon the property itself. They would need to go through formal site plan approval, which they're working with their civil designers as we speak, and come back before the planning commission and city council with the formal plans. Tonight, what we're asking for is to agree with the assumptions for the land credit deal. What we would do is move forward in drafting the documents for the sale of the property, and then the applicant will move forward towards site plan and bringing that forward for your approval as well. One peculiarity of this property that we do need to discuss tonight is the dirt on the property itself. You can see on the aerial photo, about here, there is about 8,000 cubic yards of topsoil. The topsoil originated back in 2005, 2006, when the mass grading of the industrial park in this section took place. We had a situation where we had probably two or three feet of organic soil across the larger property here, and we wanted to remove that so that the land was more buildable, and this was a place to stockpile it. So it's been stockpiled here for a period of time. One of the questions that we posed to Hedra at the last meeting was, well, we need to get rid of it for the development of the property. Public Works still has a desire to use the dirt for projects that come forward. Would they be amenable to using the proceeds for the land sale, which would be about $63,000, to move the dirt to another location? We had reached out to some contractors, estimated the cost of moving the dirt stockpile to be about $56,000. So essentially, the money that would be coming in from the sale of the property would cover the proposed transfer to another site. We discussed that at Hedra at their meeting. They were not, they were not in favor of using the proceeds for this purpose. They would like to use the proceeds from the sale of the property to further other economic and industrial park goals on this. One of the suggestions, following up on that, talk with the Public Works Director, what we're proposing to do is if the city council is in agreement with Hedra in not using the proceeds of the land to fund the removal of the stockpile, we would ask you to move forward on the next item on the agenda, which would be the declaring the stockpile as excess property. And then we would, we would take the next steps towards finding a suitable buyer for the, buyer for the stockpile and remove it in that fashion. So, Mr. Chad Sumara from Creek Rentals is here tonight as well, if you have any questions for him, and I can stand for any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Council discussion? Councilmember Leifelt?
Thank you, Your Honor. John, question for you, if we declared as excess property, just understand, so then it would, we would look to sell it?
Correct.
Do we have a timeframe here as far as how quickly we need to be getting this topsoil out of there? I mean, is that an issue if we, if we go this route?
Yeah, that, we are working within the timeframe that the applicant would be moving forward with the plans, understand that he'd like to get something going later on this year. And so, we think that we, if we put this out for advertisement, we can find someone and get it moved off in a reasonable period of time.
Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. What would be the plan B if the Craigslist ad doesn't work?
Well, if the, if the ad didn't work, we have to look at, at other things, I guess, at that standpoint. We're hopeful that the demand would be there so that someone would find it, but we'd have to work with the applicant on the timeframe or find another place for the project.
Councilmember Brax?
So are there any other available parcels that would meet the requirements of the applicant other than this one that has the dirt sitting on it?
Sure. We looked at a couple of different properties over here. I mean, on the south side of Spiral Boulevard, you have three parcels. This is about 2.58 acres. This one's a little bit larger, as you can see, this one being a little bit smaller. The applicant had originally looked at this property. We were hesitant to, to offer this property up just because it's in the middle, and it decreases any opportunities in the future to combine these two if the option came forward for a larger project. So, we thought this would be a good location, being mini-storage is a pretty passive use, and you've got residential right next door. There's the possibility of putting it on the corner over here, albeit we're looking for something with a, that, from a building finish standpoint, or from an activity standpoint that might be a little bit larger for that corner lot.
Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just some past history for my colleagues here on the Hedra, where my Hedra hat, the reason, like staff had mentioned, we didn't want the Hedra dollars to use to move this, the city put the, where my city council at, now they're the ones that put the dirt there. So, if the city Public Works needs it or has it earmarked for something, I would ask that the city council, the city staff say, "You get to pay the $56,000 to get it off there so we can get the Hedra project moving along." That was kind of my plan B model, is we still want this project to happen out there, we just need to get rid of this dirt. And as one of my colleagues on the Hedra said, "If they didn't give it away, are we ahead by, we just need this dirt moved so this project can move forward in this location."
Any other council, yes, councilmember Lund? Oh, sure. Make a motion, please, sure. To approve? Have a second, Mark? Any other discussion? Councilmember Bolsonik?
Thank you, Your Honor. It probably does deserve mentioning that the applicant is planning on landscaping and treatment of the facility above and beyond what were the basic minimum standards for, for this, for this kind of a property. And to that extent, I think that's good. And I just wanted to make note of that to the public, that this is going to be a very nice piece of property when it, when it is all completed. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. No other discussion? Motion is on the table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails. Okay. We will now declare the topsoil pile from the property as excess property. Council and I will open for a motion to approve. Councilmember Lund and councilmember Leifelt, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion prevails. Next, we have administration. Julie, can you...
Actually, I'm gonna turn it over to John Hensman first, maybe Mark, or councilwoman Vaughn, let me tell us, pulling that?
I do, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Julie. I just want to make a few points about this, because I know we're calling the public hearing, we're gonna have a public hearing on this ordinance change in two weeks. So, I just want, I want to work with my colleagues here and let the audience know, changing an ordinance to me is a pretty important thing. We need to make sure we're doing our due diligence. So, I got three points that I want staff, I want to give them a couple of weeks to come back with some answers, because I still have a few questions. Can staff provide me some data? How many calls have we received or inquiries that residents are requesting this? We reviewed this in 2009 when I was on the planning commission, I'm just curious, do we have data that staff has that says, this is as many calls that we got? The second item that I'm looking for is, has staff checked with any of the local realtors? I did hear on the planning commission meeting that someone says this might be holding us people back, I think it was the planning commission, of residents moving here because this ordinance prevents that. I just wanted to confirm, let's verify with our realtors in town, is that true? Are we hearing that, that this ordinance is blocking people from moving to Hastings?
Call from member Vaughn.
Sure.
Ordinance blocking it, that we have it or we do not have it?
We do not have it, sorry. We do not allow it. And then I did notice in the proposed ordinance, I noticed that we changed the feet from notification from 350 to 200. And I did notice that this is gonna go in front of, each application would come in front of us as a council. The third question I'll have for staff, and May 20th is fine to come back with this, is why would we recommend even bringing it to us then? Because what if someone, what if the neighbor, if I live next to Councilor Bolsonik, I said, "I don't want that." We're putting ourselves in the middle of us two, saying, "Well, who do we agree with on allowing the chickens versus this person doesn't want it?" So, I don't know why we would even put that part in the ordinance, and I'll just look for some clarification of why we do any notification, or why do we even bring it in front of council? If we approve it, we should have it administrative role, not in front of the council. So those are the three items, if you want any clarification on that. But those are the three that I'll be looking for, for the May 20th public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Councilmember Brax?
I just want to add something to what councilmember Vaughn already said, which is, I had a question about who was gonna be enforcing the ordinance and what that process would be. So I would like to know that as well in two weeks.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, you know, I don't, I guess I don't have a strong feeling one way or the, another on chickens, but I know some people do, and I've heard both sides of the, both sides of the fence on this. It seems like it's, you know, fairly low interest item, it's not something that, you know, half the city is clamoring for and so forth, but nonetheless, we need to look into it, especially because it may be a lower item, and we're making a big change for it, as council, or councilmember Vaughn had just said. I'm struggling a little bit here. I, I feel like this is a citywide policy change that maybe should be a neighborhood decision almost, in a lot of ways. And almost to your point, you know, why bring it up here if one person disagrees and we're in the middle here? But I, I'm not really sure where this goes, if, if I need to make a motion to send it back to the commission, the planning commission, to discuss building in some sort of neighborhood approval. You know, that's maybe a little bit odd, but just some sort of, I don't know, two-thirds, majority approval for this, because I think, I think it's, it's too niche to say it's a citywide thing that's okay across the city when, when it may be very much more of a neighborhood type of decision, if that makes sense. So, I don't know if that's something that we can bring back procedurally, I guess. Is that something that could be brought back as a recommendation? Or do I truly need to make some sort of motion to push it back to the commission? Either way, I'm happy to, you know, do whatever makes the most sense. But that's kind of where my head is at, is maybe this needs to be talked about just a little bit more, you know, tweak it a little bit, so that when we are talking about it at this level, that we have something that's maybe more suitable for what this needs to be.
Councilmember Leifelt?
Thank you, Your Honor. To councilmember Lund's point, wouldn't that, sending it to public hearing, isn't that our way of finding out what the community thinks? I mean, I don't really see the point to sending this back to commission when, right now, what we need to find out is what do the neighbors think? You know, I, we have no idea, is this going to be an uproar, is it not? To councilmember Vaughn's point, I agree with the fact that, what are we asking? So what if, you know, in 200 feet, how many neighbors is that gonna be in your neighborhood? Twenty, thirty? I mean, because they're going past the yards, right? So if it's as a crow flies, we could be talking a large number of houses. So if the guy two blocks over from you doesn't want you to have chickens, what does that mean to us? That, I think, is a concern. And what would be the purpose, is the purpose to notify the neighborhood that, hey, by the way, this is happening. You've got a neighbor who's doing this, and yeah, they expect that it's happening, and if you have an issue, if all of a sudden you're smelling something foul, or finding rodents in your neighborhood, contact, you know, our code enforcer, which I think answers the question of who's going to enforce this. I believe it's our code administrator. But, so I guess I would be concerned at sending it back to the planning commission as where this, where we're at right now, I think, is the point where we're asking the public, hey, this is what we're talking about. We're talking about allowing an ordinance that would let neighbors have four chickens, no roosters. And then after we hear from them, do we talk about, is it necessary at that point to send it back?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmember Leifelt, I understand where you're coming from, but I think, you know, if we are to discuss it at this level, at the, you know, the next meeting or whatnot, then we're discussing what's on the table, in a lot of cases, right? So what I'm suggesting is that what is discussed is a little bit of a deviation or a tweak, you know, maybe is a better word, to what's currently in front of us. So it's not so much a yes or no of this particular, but a yes or no of something with some, maybe a little bit more parameters around it. If, if, this isn't really to see what the neighbors think at the, at this hearing level, it'd be more of a general vibe of the community. But, you know, I doubt that everybody's going to be coming here, you know, in two weeks to talk about this. But I would imagine that if somebody were to be putting up a chicken coop next door, then that's when that person would be, feel like they were being impacted and would want to talk about it, right? So, I guess, I do see them as separate things, and I don't want to put more work on commissions, but this is how I would see coming forward with something that's a little bit more vetted.
Thank you, councilmember Lund. Councilmember Leifelt?
I guess I'm having a problem understanding what you're asking the commission to do. So, are we asked, are you suggesting that they give us a, a better process of where the neighborhood stands? Is that, I'm sorry, I'm not following what you're asking the commission to, to vet for us.
Thank you, Your Honor. Good question, councilmember. I'm asking for a little bit more clarification around how we get approval, and right now, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't feel that how it's set up right now really allows that each neighborhood to speak for itself, rather than the whole city, whole city has the same policy. And so, I'd like the commission to explore having, you know, neighborhood have some sort of approval process, and what does that process look like, so that we can discuss that at this level.
Councilmember Bolsonik?
Thank you, Your Honor. Procedural question, did the planning commission hold a public hearing on this then, John?
They did commission, or councilmember.
And were there any, did anybody come to speak for or against it?
Yeah, we did have two members of the public at the public hearing, one in support of chickens and one not in support of chickens. Got both sides of it.
One canceling and the other. Well, regarding what councilmember Lund is asking, I think that would be appropriate in that councilmember Vaughn has asked staff to provide the answers to three questions. And if you can do that as a staff, and I'm sure you can, present those findings to the planning commission, and then can they hold another public hearing if it's sent back to them or not?
I think that they are, I'll ask for our esteemed city attorney's opinion on this as well, but, you know, they're obligated by state statute to hold public hearings to consider amendments to ordinances, but I don't necessarily think that precludes them from holding more if they choose to.
I think they could hold another public hearing. I don't think that would be a problem. I think as to whether it could get referred back to the planning commission. I think if there's a motion by this body to refer it back, before there's a motion to go forward with the public hearing and second reading of the ordinance, then I think that can also happen, if that's what the body is inclined to do.
Then I think, councilmember Lund, if, if... Then I think, councilmember Lund, if, if, if you would make that motion, I guess, and ask for a public hearing and for answers to the three questions that councilmember Vaughn has raised, the staff could provide that, and then the planning commission could take a look at it in, in more detail. Not that they haven't already, but at, at, at the behest of the city council, asking them to do a little bit more review on that. As a, as a person who, before he was on the council and lived on four acres, I, I raised wild turkeys and I raised pheasants, but I raised 15 and 15 of each. Again, this ordinance is saying four chickens, no roosters. But, the reason I'm bringing this up is that it was, it was a valuable educational piece in our neighborhood. We had kids coming over when the birds were let loose. Unfortunately, the turkeys imprinted on me. I'm not sure what, what attraction they had, or what attraction I had to them, but they used to hang around. Found out that they liked watermelon because they were eating the seeds as the kids were spitting them out. So, I was running to cover about once a week and cutting up watermelon, sticking out there for the, for the, the wild turkeys. It was a rather colorful thing. And so, I'm looking forward to some good detail regarding what the planning commission might come back with and regarding that. The, I, I believe this ordinance came up, seems like a thousand years ago when I was on the council, but we, we, we have in the, in the audience, Mrs. Langenfeld, and I, I believe that at the time it came up, it was kind of working around what the Laduke mansion was looking for, to raise chickens as an educational type of a thing. When it came to a council vote on the ordinance itself, not necessarily for the Laduke, there were a couple of people who spoke very emotionally about the educational value and also the, the sense of having pets, as far as that goes. So, there, there are a number of reasons. Something else to mention, too, is that, you know, you look at the Sunday Flyer and Fleet Farm, Menards, all of them out there, some of the garden centers have some pretty sophisticated looking chicken coops that are available, so that hopefully we're, you know, if this were to pass, we wouldn't see a lot of chicken wire and some things, you know, perhaps looking askew. So, the last thing to mention is that after we defeated this ordinance the last time, there became kind of a ground swell of other cities, St. Paul included, and Minneapolis, I believe now, that started to propose and passed ordinances that allowed kind of a standard of four chickens, no roosters on property, and it has become a rather fashionable thing. My house is on the historic registry, over 100 years old, and when we purchased the property, Dick Darsow, who we all remember fondly, told me that Spring Street was called Spring Street because there was a spring down at Wilson Park on the corner of Fourth and Spring. And the people who owned our home had a barn, and they had a cow and a goat and a couple of other four-legged animals, and they would take them down, as other neighbors did, down to the spring twice a day to go ahead and drink, and then they would bring them back up again. The barn is gone, but the, the, the barn wood was used to make a very sturdy one and a half car garage on our property. But, very colorful past is really what I'm talking about, and there's no reason why we can't visit that again someday. But, I think it is a, a good thing that councilmember Lund is, is suggesting, and we can have the planning commission go back, do another public hearing. Perhaps we'll get a little more publicity on this through the paper and our, and our beloved radio station, and we may get some people coming for and against, and then we can bring it back to the council and take a final look. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Brax?
May I offer an alternative path? I think we could accomplish the same end goal of having a different neighborhood notification requirement through the amendment process. So, instead of sending this back to the planning commission, having them look at it, bringing it back to the council, maybe it would be more efficient of everybody's time if we would just ask John to consider what language there might be around a, a neighborhood notification that might be slightly different than what's approved by the planning commission, and that could be incorporated in amendment if you so choose, when we have the public hearing and then later vote on the ordinance. But I think we still have information to gather, and this isn't a final thing. We could always at a later point in time decide to send it back, but I just think it would be more efficient and effective if this was more around the amendment to the ordinance, rather than trying to worry about creating procedural hurdles. And I'm saving all my chicken ponds, I have a list. Councilmember Leifelt started hers early, but I'm saving mine until May 20th.
Councilmember Lund?
We have a comedian in the room. Yeah, I have, I, thank you, Your Honor. I, I have, I have no issue, that's, it's fine. I don't want to complicate things, that's not, that's not the point of this. It was, I, I just wanted it to be a little bit better than what, you know, what I see right now. If, if that seems to be a suitable solution. The reason why I didn't want to create an amendment to anything on the spot here is, I'm not, I don't have enough insight to say this many, you know, this X percent for approval, and here's the process that it needs to, needs to be done. I feel like that's something that should be discussed by staff and the commission to come up with a really solid rationale for, for what the suggestions are, and I'm not going to sit here and pretend that I can do that right here, right now, and, and come up with something that isn't going to, you know, have some holes in it. So, that was my reason for sending it back, so it could just be discussed and thought about and, and, and then brought forward and discussed at that level. So, not trying to, you know, complicate things or waste anybody's time. So, I think, I appreciate your, your solution, and so then I would just, I would just ask, you know, that, that, I guess what she said, but I guess that would get tacked on to the list of things to do for next time. Okay? Thank you.
Councilmember Leifelt?
Like to make a motion then, that we approve the first reading and send a order to public hearing?
Okay.
On the, on the stipulation that we do have these items that Ms., councilmember Vaughn has requested, the data on how many calls have been received, a better feel for how realtors are feeling that it's impacting us, and then the notification process. There is information in our packet, the planning commission memorandum does talk about what other cities have done and where this data was collected from, so they, they have done that due diligence as well, so I would ask that those questions be answered at our, May 20th, it sounds like, May 20th meeting. Thank you, Your Honor.
Is that a second to the motion then? Councilmember Brax? Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion pass. Counsel, is there any announcements? If not, I have a few. City council will hold a joint workshop with Hedra on Thursday, May 9th at 6:00 PM. The Hedra meeting will follow the workshop. City council will conduct a workshop on Monday, May 13th at 5:30 PM to discuss the 2020 budget. Planning commission will meet at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 13th. Parks and Rec commission will meet Tuesday, May 14th at 7:00 PM. Utilities committee, committee of the council will meet Monday, May 20th at 5:30. Our police week open house will be Tuesday, May 14th, starting at 5:00 PM, and our next council meeting will be Monday, May 20th. Councilmember Leifelt?
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have one item I would like to let anyone know who's watching us. People are always looking for ways to help out around the community, and I have an event that I'm going to be attending this Saturday, the 11th, out at St. John Cemetery in Vermillion. I'm sure many people around the area know somebody who's residing in that cemetery, as many of my family is there. But there will be a cemetery cleanup, and I've got a young cousin of mine, I, I believe he's an Eagle Scout, and he has arranged a project at the cemetery to clean off the headstones and tombstones of veterans, their spouses, and infant, infant children. So, I went out there last weekend to do it. It was a really interesting process because we're talking, you know, 100-plus-year-old graves. It was really a wonderful event. So, if anyone is interested, that'll be out at St. John Cemetery. If you have questions, feel free to get ahold of me, otherwise just show up. The more hands, the better. It's, it's a really worthwhile, I mean, I was, I went out there, I spent as much time as I could on Saturday. It was just a, a really neat event to, to know that when we got done, these stones were white again, and it just was really a pretty neat process. So, feel free, 10 o'clock to 4 o'clock, out in Vermillion next week. Thanks, Your Honor.
Councilmember Brax?
Our posting for the city administrator, the recruitment profile and the job description are live, so we do have that posting out, and it's available for anybody who's interested, and it will be open until the position is filled. So, I just wanted to let everyone know the update is that we finished the recruitment profile and the job description. The administrative committee of the council approved that, and our consultant, Mr. Jim Miller of the Mercer Group, has posted the position, and it will be open for 30 days. Is that correct?
Thank you. Councilmember Bosonic?
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Just to let you all know, I'll be attending the quarterly meeting of the Dakota Communication Center next Thursday, the 16th, 8:00 AM. That's our 911 center, if anybody has forgotten, where I serve on the board of directors. Thank you.
Thank you. If that, there are no other announcements, council, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Brax? Councilmember Vaughn? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion prevails.